Este encuentro se centrará en dos partes, ambas que realmente afectan a nuestro pueblo. La primera parte será una revisión y hemos preparado algunos reglamentos de ley, dos de los cuales fueron rechazados porque el encuentro del comité de asesorías, al menos, fue una broma. Nadie, incluido el presidente y el señor Israel, trajo los reglamentos de ley. Afortunadamente, alguien como yo trajo el CV Messenger, que incluía los reglamentos de ley. Se aprobó un comentario: "No lo necesitamos, hablamos de esto antes". No se preocupen, pasaron 40 minutos decidiendo si debería ser una o dos partes. No tuvieron una carta de abogado para respaldarlos. Rechazaron devolverlo a Olga, quien lo presentó, aunque dijo que lo devolvería. Pasaron otros 40 minutos votando sobre él, que fueron límites de mandato y limitar quién podría controlar el periódico y la cadena 63. Luego dijeron: "Vamos a la segunda parte", y se refirió a Olga. Ella, siendo muy buena parlamentaria, dijo: "Hazlo ahora, ahora mismo, solo hazlo". Así que dijimos: "Si eres tan buena parlamentaria y nos están rechazando, tú lo haces". Bueno, pasaron otros 30 minutos y luego se revertieron en el primer voto y lo devolvieron a nosotros. Un desperdicio total, un desperdicio total y falta de preparación y profesionalismo. Y, sin embargo, el señor Israel estaba allí y se roncaba y dijo: "No sería bueno, porque las personas que dirigen el periódico no son oficiales". Bueno, dos cosas deberían haber ocurrido: tres. Una, deberían haber traído los reglamentos de ley. Dos, si su abogado dijo que estos reglamentos, como presentaron, no eran buenos, tenían tiempo suficiente para devolverlos a Olga, decirle y darle la oportunidad de reescribirlos en el tiempo que podamos tener un encuentro productivo. Y tres, continuamos escuchando a su abogado: "Nadie produce una carta". Bueno, para aquellos de ustedes que leen el CV Messenger, teníamos una carta de abogado que publicamos, que decía que la forma correcta de presentar estos reglamentos era como los presentábamos. Publicamos eso y el artículo era: "Te mostramos nuestros, ahora me muestras tuyos". Nunca obtuvimos nada. Otra cosa surgió cuando estos reglamentos fueron rechazados. Marilyn Galadenza dijo a Olga: "No vamos a aceptar la firma de nadie a menos que lo firmen en persona". Bueno, no sé, miré los reglamentos, miré los artículos de incorporación, miré los otros acuerdos, no hay nada allí. Por supuesto, para las elecciones de Estados Unidos, se puede tener un voto de proxy, se puede tener un voto de correo electrónico, pero no aquí en Century Village. En consecuencia, hubo otro encuentro, el encuentro del Tesoro, donde teníamos a Al Legard sentado en la puerta y uno no permitió a Neil Moore porque no es dueño. Nunca he oído eso antes, no he visto eso en los reglamentos. Y el señor Israel comentó que comprudió con su abogado, nuevamente, el misterioso abogado, y él apoya eso. Bueno, él apoya cualquier cosa que no lo concice. Y esa es una de las razones por las que estamos aquí hoy, para tratar de corregir y continuar este pueblo de manera que ha operado con éxito durante muchos, muchos años. No se exageren, para preparar estos reglamentos, tuve una ayuda terribles de Neil en ponerlos juntos, investigando. Y una de las cosas que hice fue que volví a 2010 en el blog del señor Israel, porque me happen a tener los reglamentos de 2010 y quería ver los cambios que sucedieron entre 2010 y 2013, los reglamentos que hay en el blog. Lo primero es que no hay rastro. Tendrás que ser Sherlock Holmes para encontrar el ajuste a los minutos. Normalmente, los minutos los cruzas, los dejas y imprimes los minutos como eran antes.
Los reglamentos.
Está bien, volví y los traje, que os mostraré más tarde. El encuentro de la Asamblea De Delegados de los últimos reglamentos que encontramos en 2010, que Randall preparó. Esos reglamentos ni siquiera contaban con una de las cosas que vamos a abordar hoy. Antes de ir más allá, es nuestra misión, y aquellos de ustedes que leen el CV Messenger y escuchen, y reciben nuestras correos electrónicos, y por cierto, a todos los que tienen un correo electrónico y no están recibiendo nuestros mensajes, nuestro periódico, por favor, envíenlo a Marilyn al final del encuentro y denle su información. Estamos constantemente recibiendo gente, mucha gente de fuera de la ciudad. Incluso tenemos algunas asociaciones que envían el CV Messenger a la gente de fuera. Lo que quiero hacer es que en un esfuerzo adicional para traerles más información, como ya saben, una persona muy cínica estaba en la cadena 63 entregando un mensaje muy, muy desagradable a aquellos que estaban viendo la cadena 63. Y eso fue una entrevista de nuestra propia Betty Blackman de Esther Sotuski, revisando un libro.
Su club.
Su club.
Fue su club.
Sin embargo, no le gustaron los poderes que fueran, incluyendo al señor Ed Lack, que tiene su dedo en todo, y lo sacaron. Debido a eso, muchos de ustedes conocen a una pareja que dedicaron su propio dinero, su tiempo y esfuerzo para traerles estas cosas a la cadena 63. Sintieron que era tan ingenuo que se resignaron, está bien. Al menos eso mostró algo de chutzba y sentido. Y podemos sentarnos aquí y complain, pero depende de nosotros hacerlo y hacer funcionar. Howie Silver y Neil Moore, que están sentados aquí, condujeron la primera sesión de un programa en curso, que estamos patrocinando, que es "The View" de Century Village. Llamamos a la televisión, dijeron que podíamos usarlo, pregunté a cualquiera de ellos si querían aparecer, dijeron que no están ahí, pero pueden aparecer. Algunos de nuestros residentes que están interesados en ser preguntados, aparecieron en esta primera sesión. Vamos a mostrarles solo un resumen breve, no vamos a pasar por todo el tema, que gira por media hora, y continuaremos. Y cuando lo vean, que estará en nuestra página web, invitamos a cualquiera de ustedes que sienta que quiere participar en un determinado tema a darnos saber y están dispuestos a ir a la cámara. Y divertiremos a cada uno de ustedes. No lo estamos censurando, y si ven todo esto, verán la diferencia de opinión. Esto es solo un corto para darles una idea de lo que vamos a sacar. Y por cierto, también estamos viendo en todo el mundo. De hecho, recibí una carta de ISIS y les preguntaron si podían comprarla o alquilarla en Sheffield Dome. Dije: "¿Lo llamaste?" All right. Howie va a configurarlo. Si estoy en su camino, déjame saber, Howie. Por cierto, esto fue nuestro primer, aprendimos mucho de esto. El artista de la maquillaje no era realmente mujer. El especialista de la maquillaje tenemos que cambiar. Lo cuidaremos en el futuro. ¿Estamos listos, Howie? No estamos listos. Vi a Mitten Verle anoche. ¿Lo vieron? Estaba en "War and Order", creo. Las mismas bromas. Hazlo fácil, Howie, necesitas un cable para ponerlo. ¿Estás listo, Howie? No todavía. Diez, nueve, ocho.
¿Cómo explotaste?
Recibes dos cópias, una mitad de página de una cópia y una serie. ¿Quieren verlo sin las pantallas grandes? Vamos al siguiente tema. All right, vamos al siguiente tema. Cuando llegue, vamos a seguir. Está bien, la forma en que me gustaría llevar esto... Y nuevamente quiero enfatizar, a todos los que no han recibido el CV Messenger, déjenlo a Marilyn saber. A todos los que no reciben nuestros correos electrónicos, déjenlos saber. Estamos intentando cubrir todo el pueblo. Estoy orgulloso de decir que en el último CV Messenger teníamos más de 5,000 problemas entre la copia hard y nuestra página web. Y estamos subiendo cada mes. Y eso muestra a la gente de todo el país. No me estoy engañando, tenía algunos de India este mes. También querían comprarlo, el pueblo entero.
Quieren la tierra. No quieren el pueblo, quieren la tierra.
Bueno, me gustaría empezar, hay varios problemas. Y uno de los principales problemas que surgió y estaba en los originales reglamentos fue revertir y devolver límites de mandato para oficiales. Eso estaba combinado, si lo vieron, con limitar a cualquiera que fuera elegido, ya sea el Consejo Ejecutivo o oficial, para estar en cargo de la cadena 63, el pueblo, la UCO Reporter y cualquier otro medio, para que podamos tener un organismo no sesgado. Ahora, sin embargo, no creo que sea sesgado, y creo que mucha gente tampoco. Así que lo que he hecho con otra ayuda, es preparar dos reglamentos de ley, en realidad tres. El primer reglamento de ley limita los límites de mandato a dos mandatos consecutivos. Ahora, he oído todos los argumentos pro y con, y Gary fue amable en su blog para imprimir muchos de ellos que surgieron. Cada uno tendrá su propia opinión. La opinión más fuerte, de nuevo, he oído, es que vamos a perder talento. No se supone que se pierdan el talento. Aquellos que están en el oficio, que ya no están en el oficio, tienen dos opciones. Una, pueden ir por otro oficio, solo se limitan a dos mandatos para ese particular oficio. Dos, es que no necesitan un título para contribuir lo que saben a la comunidad. Esa es la segunda. Y la tercera, francamente, estaba tentado, pero me pidieron no hacerlo. Todo este párrafo sobre el presidente meritos es solo palabras. Ahora, tenemos un presidente meritos aquí. Me gustaría saber cuántas veces más de diez que George Lowenstein fue consultado. Es... ¡Oh! Cero, nada. Es solo palabras, significa nada. Pero, dando algunos consejos, los dejé en esta ocasión. La segunda, que se refiere a ese reglamento, es que cuando lo reviso, no veo ningún límite de mandato para los oficiales ejecutivos. Preparé un reglamento limitando dos mandatos consecutivos a los oficiales ejecutivos. Volví hasta 2010 y miré quiénes eran los oficiales ejecutivos. Y básicamente tenemos reiterando oficiales ejecutivos. Lo mismo se aplica a los oficiales ejecutivos. Pueden ser tan útiles y mejores en un comité o venir a la Asamblea De Delegados y contribuir, o convertirse en delegado, porque no puedes ser un delegado y un oficial ejecutivo. Así que, si ese es el caso, francamente, estoy por nuevo sangre. Todos hicieron mucho, ¿de qué manera? Depende de ustedes, los delegados, para votar. Combinado con eso, no es tan simple, como leí los reglamentos. Hay algo llamado ex officio. Ahora, ex officio en 2010 no existía para nadie excepto el presidente. Repasé todos los periódicos entre junio de 2010 y 2013. No encuentro dónde cada oficial se convirtió en ex officio y lo pusieron en el párrafo. Ex officio, como definido en las reglas parlamentarias, es que esa persona en particular puede estar en cualquier comité y tener todos los derechos y la capacidad de votar en cualquier comité. Un ejemplo brillante de la náusea que eso realmente significa es que cuando presentamos los reglamentos, si leen la sección sobre los reglamentos, primero va al comité de asesorías. Ahora, para aquellos de ustedes que no lo han leído, por favor, lean sus reglamentos. Solo hay una referencia en todos los reglamentos al comité de asesorías, y eso está en el voto. Después de esto, ponen un párrafo en el que... ¡Qué ex officio significa! Y aquí hay un ejemplo. Lo presentamos al comité de asesorías. Cada oficial está en el comité de asesorías y voto. Entonces va al comité de oficiales. Cada oficial está en el comité de oficiales y voto. Entonces va al Consejo Ejecutivo. Cada oficial está en el Consejo Ejecutivo y voto. ¿Por qué no hace un único encuentro? Tienes las mismas personas sentadas en cada encuentro. Y encima de eso, el comité de presidente, sin duda, puede agregar otra ocho o diez... Jerry, puede agregar otra ocho o diez personas al Consejo Ejecutivo. Y decimos... El otro argumento es que no tenemos a nadie para ir por, absolutamente falso. Acabo de ir a un encuentro con ocho personas que dijeron que iban por presidente. Incluso Donald Trump estaba considerado. No vive tan lejos. Compró una unidad con una propiedad. Así que hay un reglamento que está vinculado a esto, que dice: "Nadie, incluido el presidente, es un oficial ex officio". Ahora, no sé cuántos de ustedes han estado en oficiales en empresas públicas. Solo puedo ver mi experiencia, yo lo fui. Esa no es la forma en que se run una empresa. Delegas. Si pones a alguien en el presidente, el presidente tiene que dirigir el comité y ser reportable. Así que eso está vinculado. Así que en realidad hay cuatro reglamentos diferentes, porque querían separarlos en relación con uno, límites de mandato. Dos directamente en límites de mandato, uno para los oficiales, uno para el Consejo Ejecutivo. El ex officio es para todos los oficiales que se convirtieron en ex oficiales a ser borrados, incluyendo al presidente. Y tres, un simple reglamento en los reglamentos mixteros, que cualquiera que esté en un comité y está en más de un comité, y el mismo problema se presenta, obtiene un palo de la naranja. Si te sientas en cuatro comités que están revisando la misma cosa, obtienes cuatro votos. Esto es una náusea. Así que esos son los primeros cuatro. Hay el quinto, que está escrito separadamente, que claramente dice que cualquier oficial elegido, presidente, tesoro, vicepresidente, secretario, miembro del Consejo Ejecutivo, no puede estar en control del UCO Reporter y cualquier otro medio, incluyendo la cadena 63, y lo que quieran llamarlo, porque mañana no será la cadena 64, será la cadena 69, será el comité de la radio, será este comité. Estos son los reglamentos que trajimos a ustedes para presentar. Y esa es la primera parte del encuentro. La segunda parte será cómo vamos a continuar con que el señor Kelly deje el pueblo. Ahora me gustaría tener preguntas sobre los dos límites de mandato, dos límites de mandato, y luego veremos el otro. Jerry Kaufman fue el primero en levantar su mano.
Ed, todo está muy bien lo que estás diciendo, pero el problema es que todavía tenemos que pasar el mismo proceso para hacer que todo sea aprobado. Lo que yo diría es que a la mierda con el proceso, conseguir una mayoría overwhelming de los delegados y empujar a la fin de los límites de mandato y todas las otras cosas. Pero cuando empiezas a pasar por el sistema, estás muerto, porque controla el Consejo Ejecutivo, controla el comité, controla el periódico, todo. Así que tienes que pasar por todo eso. Y si significa romper los reglamentos, así sea. Pero tienes que hacer eso, porque nunca conseguirás pasar los demás cosas, nunca.
Jerry, aprecio su opinión, pero a menos que tengamos a Nina Pinter y Santa Maria y estemos dispuestos a tirar la taza de los votos, tienes una otra opción, y esa es, sabes que el acuerdo de ley de ley es renovable anualmente, tu asociación puede resignarse. Siguiente. Sandy está defendiendo a Olga. ¿Quieren micrófono? No podemos escuchar.
Sí, pueden escucharme. Dos, quiero aclarar que son dos mandatos de dos años.
Eso es lo que tenemos. Dos mandatos consecutivos de dos años, es correcto. Tú eres el siguiente. ¿Puedes hablar más? No normalmente hablan. ¿Cuál es tu nombre?
Sandy.
Está bien, Sandy.
Los dos mandatos consecutivos de dos años, ¿correctos?
Correcto.
Sabes que hay una división donde se puede tener un tiempo de vida que no pueden volver después de los dos años, están fuera de la vida, no pueden volver a ese oficio.
Repasé...
Dijiste eso, no pueden ir por ese oficio. Nuevamente, se les da.
En otras palabras, tienen dos mandatos consecutivos.
Correcto.
No pueden ir, están fuera de la vida, eso es un tiempo de vida en un mandato consecutivo. No pueden volver un año después y decir: "Voy a ir por ese oficio".
Francamente, no vi eso en los reglamentos.
Lo tengo aquí.
No pueden ir por el mismo oficio.
El mismo oficio, está bien.
Eso es algo dado.
Está bien, eso es algo dado. Bueno. Dan Gladstone, levanta.
Dan, está bien. En este encuentro de que estás hablando, en el comité de asesorías, Barbara Cornish, que es la vicepresidenta...
Esperen, esperen, esperen.
... llegó con una declaración de que hay o hay límites, porque hay un voto y puedes votarlo fuera. Ahora, esto es un poco malo porque cuando David Israel gana, muchas otras buenas personas no van. Así que esto también debe ser abordado. Límites de mandato son límites de mandato, y lo que dijo Barbara Cornish es un poco malo.
No creo que sí.
Está bien. Esperen, esperen.
Justo lo fuera, por lo que tienes los límites de mandato.
Entiendo eso. Tenemos gente que no está de acuerdo contigo. Y en realidad Betty L. Blackman estaba en nuestra mesa redonda, y expresó esta opinión, aunque ese no era realmente el tema. Así que Betty, tu turno.
Serve seis meses en ese oficio. Así que es por eso que soy impuesta a los límites de mandato, y así es con Barbara.
¿Quién es la juez?
Barbara, Barbara Cornish.
¿Dónde está?
Barbara está en Nueva York.
Bueno, aprecio que entregues el mensaje.
No, no estoy entregando el mensaje para ella, pero dado que su nombre se mencionó...
No lo mencioné.
Dan Gladstone.
Barbara Cornish también se resignó porque lo votamos.
Eso es correcto.
Está bien, así que conocemos a Barbara Cornish, y aprecio su opinión. Y ahí, en la parte de atrás, está George Lowenstein, que sirvió en dos capacidades. Y en realidad ahora está en la tercera capacidad, y está guardándonos como COO, y es uno de los pocos tipos que puede caminar.
Primero de todo, fui elegido, en realidad, tres veces.
Lo disculpo.
Está bien, porque en el medio me resigné y luego volví a correr y volví. Creo que, número uno, estaba limitado a los dos mandatos consecutivos. Pero cuando campané, todo estaba disponible para mí. Teníamos una reunió en Kenpool, pudimos entrar al club house y hablar con el presidente y las diversas organizaciones y sus miembros. Ahora, todo esto ha cambiado, está bien. Vimos en la última elección que Esther se prohibió usar ninguna y todas las instalaciones de WPRF. ¿Por qué? Porque David tiene todo su poder para decidir y decirle a WPRF que no se debe permitir ninguna campaña o literatura de campaña. Así que el incumbente tiene una gran ventaja.
Está bien.
Y así, cualquiera que quiera desafiar a David Israel, como hizo Esther en la última elección, va a tener un gran dificultad en conseguir su mensaje a la gente, porque no hay instalaciones en Century Village para permitir la reunión de personas, de residentes que son potenciales votantes. No se puede hacerlo en el pool, no se puede hacerlo en el club house. ¿Dónde puedes hacer esto? Así que hay una gran ventaja del incumbente, así que todo esto... Cuando me quedé atrapado con límites de mandato, creo que fue una buena cosa. Desafortunadamente, la que me llegó no fue una buena cosa, pero el hecho de que no hubieran límites pensé que era una cosa excelente. En cuanto al presidente meritos se trata, si se usa correctamente, está ahí para transición, para ayudar al nuevo presidente y decirle lo que sea que está pasando, etc. Ahora, David decidió no me usar cuando mantuve esa posición. Y puedo decirte que fui elegido al Consejo Ejecutivo, ahora estoy en el Consejo Ejecutivo, y hay una regla standing, que no está escrita en los reglamentos, pero es una regla standing, que todos los miembros del Consejo Ejecutivo deberían hacer más que servir en el Consejo Ejecutivo. Deberían servir en dos comités separados, está bien. Bueno, siendo CPA y antiguo tesoro y antiguo presidente, fui a David y dije: "Me gustaría voluntariar para el Consejo Financiero", pero creo que no estoy calificado para eso. Y número dos, me gustaría voluntariar para otro comité que había sido presidente. Él dijo: "Bueno, completa una formación". Dije: "No voy a completar una formación, no creo que tenga que". Sabes cuáles son mis calificaciones, por lo que... Él dijo: "Bueno, lo siento", y eso fue el final. Así que no serviré en ningún otro comité en este punto, porque los dos comités que pedí que fuera, que estaba calificado, él decidió no aprobarlo. Así que estoy solo en el Consejo Ejecutivo y nada más. No porque no quisiera, no porque no me hubiera ofrecido por mi experiencia pasada. Fui un tesoro de UCO, se podría decir que fui presidente pasado. Tengo todo este fondo, pero, ya sabes, como sean sus sentimientos hacia mí, no sé. Pero ciertamente no son positivos, porque aún no diría: "Sí, gracias por el voluntariado", porque siempre... he always puts in the paper that he needs volunteers, okay?
They don't have them.
So here I said, I'm volunteering, I'm volunteering my background, I'm volunteering my career, I'm volunteering my professionalism, and that's it. So, yes, I'm in favor of term limits, because it gives anybody that runs against the candidate, if the candidate can't run anymore, it makes an open field, and I think that that would be beneficial to Century Village. So, yes, I am in favor of term limits, even though it hit me, I think it was a good thing.
Thank you. You wanted to talk.
Marsha Sicardi.
Marsha Sicardi, stand up so we can see you.
Well, I just want to correct one thing. The bylaws say that you have to be available to serve, not that you have to, that you have to be available to serve, and actually, maybe it should say that you have to, because...
Please, audience, Marsha.
Oh, you want me to face the audience? You can't hear me, or you just want to sing?
They need the microphone.
I don't need the microphone.
That's for sure.
It says that you have to be available to serve.
Right.
Okay. But actually now, we have a problem, because it should say that you have to serve, or maybe it should say that you have to chair committees, because we have now people chairing committees that were not elected by the people.
Right.
And you should, and we should only have people, you know, chairing these important committees that were elected by the people, and that would be the executive board.
Thank you. I want to add, Betty called me last night, and it wasn't surreptitious, my wife was there, and she came up with an important point. We are being denied rights all over the place. Here we're having a meeting, and the object of the meeting is to present the bylaws and possibly prevent us from running around the village to get signatures of those who agree. And Betty said she went up to Eva and said, why do we have to do that? Why can't we have a place where the prospective bylaws are left for signature? It's been done before. And she was titled unequivocally, you can't do it, just like they won't let my newspaper in, she was told that you can come to Ed's meeting. Now, just quickly, you're talking about volunteers and having experience. Everybody reaches back, Dan is an experienced insurance man. At one point I made a mistake, I said at the delegate assembly that I'm the only C P A in the audience, and I had to apologize to George. I had a senior moment. Well, I'd like to know who on the Yuko newspaper actually owned a newspaper that ran at a profit? Nobody that I know, yet a, so and I know volunteered to be a reporter, and that was me, because I owned part of three newspapers in Suffolk County, one of which was the oldest continuously published newspaper in Long Island. People have ability and experience, they're turned off, they don't come to the delegate meeting. I would like to, Olga, did you have something that you wanted to say?
No, but I just want to clarify something that Sandy said. When Sandy said that a person who has, who's term limited, that they can't run again ever for that office, he was only quoting Wikipedia. How bylaws can I not include, they don't say that. A person who's term limited can run for another office.
We know that.
Yes. What you said was correct, I just wanted to clarify.
I want to tell you that there's no shame in running for a different office. I think we had only one president of the United States who remained in politics after he was president, and I think he served as a United States senator. Again, you don't need the title to serve. I'd like to know if there's any other questions, because I'd like to move on to see if we can get... How many people here are delegates? That's terrific. I'd like to pass around one at a time, so we don't get confused. Well, we can make it easy. We have the petition for term limits of every officer. I would appreciate, if you're not bashful, instead of passing this around, we take a few minutes, and everybody here who's a delegate, who would like to vote to restore term limits, to come up and sign. Of course, I'll give you a pen.
Right now?
Right now, young fellow. The pens are coming.
It's not coming through. I also was a vice president for years.
Excuse me?
I was on the executive board.
I gotta go back a few.
This is, uh, given it all. And, uh, Holly, my left here, with... ...many years on the Yuko reporter, recently fired.
That's the one.
Holly, can you tell us what happened?
Well, I was called into the office. Uh, we can go back, a number of reasons why. First, I've been at Yuko, been a Yuko volunteer for over, over ten years, I also was a vice president for three years, I was on the executive board eight years. And our first time I was fired was when we had the golf, the golf issue. And we were at the courthouse, and David Israel came over to me and said, you're fired. Why? Because I signed a petition to have him removed as president.
So it was just as simple as that, that David Israel just walked over without any consultation or any question or anything, and just arbitrarily fired you out of the blue?
Just out of the blue. Well, it was like, like, too many, and he might have thought I knew much about my problem.
So that was the recent firing. Now, I understand that you were fired in a previous incident that took place, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Okay, well, let up this way. I intended to draw a bad meeting, and David Israel was telling the audience that items about Comcast that weren't true. So I put up an objection, and I said, you're lying to the people that are here. And he went on and went on, and he said that Comcast modem is the same order that's anybody get, and that's not true. There are photographs that say it's not true, that's number one. So the meeting ended, and we went on, then we had the Yuko reporter meeting. And at the Yuko reporter meeting, I put up an objection, why we are advertising David Israel's blog. And they said, well, we're doing it, we have never done that in the past three years, advertising his blog, because it's a private blog. So I put up a stake, and they said, well, we'll talk about it, we'll think about it. And also at the meeting, for the first time in four years, there was no agenda, what was going to happen for the next month's reporter, everything is a secret. Going back a year ago, another fact that came in, we were always, everybody in a reporter were able to get online and see what was published, and I always got online to make sure that my pictures were correct. All of a sudden, the password was changed, and they said, you can't have the password to look at the pictures. Three issues went by, the pictures were wrong, and went to press, because I was not allowed to look at my pictures that I took, and...
Well, that's just reasonable.
But the best part was, that was on Friday. One day morning, I had an assignment to go down to the city place and take pictures of the upcoming railway station that's going to happen downtown West Palm Beach. I got a call at nine o'clock in the office, your wife still wants to see me. I went down to the office, and she says, I'm sorry, you're fired, we do not want you on the paper. I spent five years on the paper, and if you look at the Yuko reporter, half of the pictures were mine, including President Obama's visit to Century Village. If I was able to get a press pass for the president, I don't know why they fired me from Yuko.
Well, that's, uh, that's a very poor situation, and it doesn't speak well for the volunteer force in Century Village. Hey, now, now I'd like to get a little bit of input from some of the other members of our panel, and we're gonna start off with Esther Zetovsky, who's been very active in the village, and is very motivated, and has offered her services as a volunteer on many occasions. So Esther, can you give us a little background on what happened with you trying to offer your services, and what happened?
Okay. I opened my services as a volunteer practically on any and every committee that David Israel felt that I would be appropriate for. Uh, the one problem that I had in my background was that I had dared to run against him during the most recent election at that point. Therefore, when I applied, eight applications being sent in, exactly as I was supposed to, I received a blank response, not one single word was sent back to me.
So they didn't answer your...
They didn't answer me, they didn't answer me, and I was told by a very reliable source that the one thing that David Israel had to say about this, I guess maybe one person approached him, was to say, I will never allow her to be on any committee, end of quote.
Well, that's ridiculous, and it really shouldn't be tolerated by the rest of the people of the village. Okay, now I'd like to go to Olga, Olga Wolkenstein, very well-known person in the village, and she has also been denied to serve, reasons so long. Olga, can you tell us what happened and what your take on it is?
As treasurer, I was on the finance committee, as treasurer, she was chairman of the committee. I was also on the committee. When David Israel was president, I was sent a letter, with no longer a dignity, and sent a letter to the chairman of the committee.
So the chairman of the committee said, the letter actually stated that you were not considered...
Yes. Um, it's unfortunate, so I was...
So you're very interested, in your time and your effort in the village, and are denied, not really a good reason for the denial. Well, that's very interesting. And now I'd like to get a few comments from our, uh, on the end, it's been silent for a moment, I'm like, because, uh, Gary Olden, who's the blog master of the village here, very active blog, it's a lot of messages and a lot of stories through the blog. Gary, can you tell us some of the stuff that just come across that blog, about people that have had this problem?
Yes, and to begin with, let me state that I've had over 10,000 comments on the blog since we started, and I have had remarks about everybody that's been fired, that he called them out this morning for this blog. And I want to mention that Howie Self who was fired, Philip Smith who was fired, that Gregs were essentially fired, that Willie Blackwell was fired, and all of these people were fired with no reason given, and just out of hand fired. It seems to me that the president can fire at will without a reason, and he fires not directly, sometimes he instructs the committee chairman to fire, but it's really jumping for him.
Well, thank you, Gary, thank you very much.
All right, that's just a short part, we'll be putting it on the internet. We, I'm going to Apple to get rid of that wind sound. When I had my camera out there, it was windy, believe it or not, and strapped it in ninety, I think it was close to eighty-five degrees in the sun, but we had a beautiful breeze. That was the first time we did it, and we're gonna do many more, and if anybody wants to be in video or has something to say, we are gonna video them and put them on our blog. Back to you, Ed. Yeah. What you, thank you very much. That's just a... Yeah, you're on it. And I gotta tell you, as it went, as it went along, it really got better, because everybody sort of got comfortable with themselves, and there was an interplay of the dialogue. And I think it's important that in every way we can be open and transparent, I said at the beginning, Betty was opposed to a lot of it, she had her time to talk about it, we told her she's wrong, but she stuck to our guns.
I've never wronged.
And we get to the part where, it's not fair where Betty was, it's just a little portion, okay? I'll get to the part. We will have everybody in there, even if we have to reshoot it, we learned something, that shooting outside, while it looks nice, is not the best way. It's not the best way, we didn't have an independent, like, you know, and it's amazing, the last time I heard that kind of wind was during the hurricane when they did it. I think you had a fan blowing, so every... No, it was a wonderful idea, it's a beautiful shot, other shots showed at the clubhouse, and that part's fine. Now we just have to talk to whoever to keep the wind down, or have a better sound.
We try our patio.
No, anyway.
We're a little closer in.
All I gotta emphasize, it's an open forum.
Excellent.
Open, and we are looking, we have a panel, I asked around, a lot of people said, I just don't want to go on camera, but I think as we go along, people will be more comfortable, and we'll have a better makeup artist, and even provide a wardrobe.
Okay.
With a sponsor. So that's what we're going to be doing and continuing. Again, I want to emphasize, anybody who doesn't get the notices in the meeting, doesn't get the newspapers, talk to Marilyn, she's our circulation manager, amongst other things, and we have a terrific delivery service, you can't get better. Linda delivers like 500 newspapers at a minimum. And Matt Lowenstein does a job, we have a lot of people who are pitching in that we need, and we could always use more, and we welcome articles. People say, have other people write, it's an open door, if you have something to write about, submit it. We don't preclude anybody from saying what they want to say. That's the object of the C V Messenger and this meeting. I want to move on, I have mine, but... Ed, if anybody wants to see the photographs, I have them out here. Okay. About Comcast. Okay. We believe you, Howie, believe me. I want to go move on to another important topic. Contrary to popular belief, which was on the first page of the Yuko reporter, all is not settled at Sheffield, though. There is nothing to help those people who are living in Sheffield, though, and we know for a fact that the cease and desist letter, and I got a letter which we published, says, let's kiss and make up. "Let's kiss and make up," does not help those individuals who are in Sheffield O.
And Erwin Levy.
Hmm?
Erwin Levy was supposed to help them.
He, he helped them as best he can. He can't get rid of Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly does not have to dissolve the corporation to run his motel. Okay? He doesn't have to. And it was kept quiet, if you read our newspaper, for three years. Yuko knew about it, David Israel knew about it, even knew about it, the Levis knew about it. And what do we get? Mark Levy hid under the desk, and he sent Erwin Levy to quiet him. Now, I appreciate his position, and I respect him, but I don't entirely agree with his position. As you may know, I offered to buy two of those units, and I said, "Mr. Levy, why don't you buy some of them?" We have to get him and his type out of the village. Be aware that this is not only happening at Sheffield O. And the fact that Mr. Kelly's lawyer said, "I changed my mind," doesn't mean a thing. He's changed his mind before. We are a target, because we're the lowest-priced real estate in Palm Beach County. Upon review, there's over 1,000 units up for sale now. Anybody who you talk to who's been around the village for a while says, "This is not the same village." There's proposals that we bring in outside management. We've done a wonderful job. What we haven't done is watch the store. Oh, that's next. I, I'll take a minute, I want you to watch this, I went back and, specifically, and I got the Yuko reporter, and this is the few seconds that the delegates took to vote on four or five amendments. We're not doing ourselves any favor by rushing them through and not discussing them like we're trying to do now. Now, those amendments were written by Randall Bichard, who was elected not to be active in the village. And one of the things I mentioned, if you read your bylaws, there is nothing that says what the advisory committee is supposed to do. Nor does it point the advisory committee to be the parliamentarian for Century Village. We all saw the outbreak of Marilyn Galadenza at the last delegate meeting. That's the second time she's done it. She did it at an advisory committee meeting when she was working with the attorneys and said, "You don't have to review it, I did it, you have to accept it." Everybody said, "No," and she went out. I'm gonna repeat this one more time, because I'll keep repeating it. That's mine. I'm in the mid-seventies, I'm Jewish, I've been going to synagogue before I was thirteen. It's the only time in my life that I walked into Anche Shalom, which is supposed to mean peace. Galadenza came running across the hallway and said, "You can't come here, you can't talk to the rabbi, he won't see you," and yelled at Sandy, who was the president at that time, "I told you not to make an appointment with him to the rabbi." That will stick in my mind, and will be taken care of in another court. So I just want to show this to you, Holly, it's a few seconds. Just press home. On the side. You hit play.
I know. It's on play now.
Oh, if you need... The voice, it was very loud before. It's not playing, it's not playing, I know. We're having the same problem. Let's move on. I want to discuss that if you read in the paper, I feel we should have a little bit of a rally. We wrote in the paper, "No homeless people here." Now, I went over to the development where Mr. Kelly lives, not far from here, down the block on Haverhill, it's called Staple Chase. If you go on any realty site, you will see it's 325 homes, no two homes are alike. And the priciest home in Mr. Kelly's development is a mere $30 million. Just a mere $30 million.
It's up Haverhill?
No, it's right off Haverhill, it's on Northlake. There's two entrances. Haverhill goes all the way down to the end when you come to Key... And at the crossover, that's the service entrance of Staple Chase. You have to go around to Northlake, and there's the entrance. It delays what's inside. Now, I was asked, "Is it legal?" I went to Palm Beach Gardens Police, I went to the town hall, I spoke to the powers that be. It's absolutely legal to hold a demonstration, as long as it's held on the sidewalk and you allow people to pass by. Fortunately, there's a sidewalk on either side of Mr. Kelly's entrance. People have written and called and said they want to participate. I'd like to pick a date that would be convenient for the most people to attend, and I think we should have a showing. Now, those of you who may or may not know it, uh, I had a brief career on television. And the reporter who did it has kept this case open, and she assured me that we've been in touch, that if we have a demonstration, it will be covered. And I think the people of Century Village should send the message, not only to Mr. Kelly, but those others who are trying to do this, don't come to Century Village. Go ahead.
Uh, do you have to have a permit to do it?
I just said, no.
No, you didn't say you didn't have that.
No, I said I...
You said it was allowed, you didn't say that...
No permit is required. No permit is required. I don't even have to call them in advance. I was given one piece of advice, "If it's warm, bring water." Okay? So I'd like to have at least a show of hands, and we will provide transportation to anybody who can't get there.
Can I make a suggestion?
You may get up and make ten suggestions.
You should notify the sheriff's department, because if you don't, someone who lives in that area might call them.
Palm, Palm Beach...
You don't have to do it.
I'll advise them. I went, let me explain, I appreciate that, let me tell you where I went first. I went to the sheriff's department. They sent me to three other departments. I was finally told, "The power that be is the Palm Beach Gardens Police," and that's where I went. I was at the sheriff's department, and they sent me to...
Will notify them.
Right, and you know who directed me? The Department of Consumer Affairs, Palm Beach County. Very nice lady, she said, "Good question, I don't know." She made a bunch of phone calls, if there are five different visits. So I'd like to see a show of hands. Yes, go ahead.
Um, excuse me.
What's your name?
I'm Marion Hunter.
Yeah.
Um, I have a son that lives up in that area, Mirasol. And, um, where are you gonna park if you're gonna drive your own vehicle?
We have provided for that by saying, if necessary, we will bring people. We have people who have volunteered to bring other people. And actually, I think we should park in Staple Chase. I'll have to talk to the owner.
Find out before you...
We'll, we've covered that, it's a good question.
And you might ask PGA if you can park somewhere there, you know, they have a...
Well, they were very nice, I have the officer who spoke to me, and I certainly could call him. I think that's a good point. Anybody else? Again, I'd like a show of hands of those who would be willing to participate. That's great. Does anybody here, we're trying to get a good date, have a suggestion? "I think we should do it in August, I think we should do it when the weather's nice. I would like to do it..."
It's too hot.
You do it early in the morning. I know a girl here plays golf in 108 degrees. We're not gonna do it in December, and besides, I gotta tell you, it's a good thing, but now the topic is right. In December, it's not right. We have to show now. And I gotta reiterate, talk to the people that live there, who have made that known three years ago. I even talked to a renter who said, "Get him out." So the answer is, we'll pick a date, we'll look at the calendar, and those of you who want to go, I'd like you to go over to Marilyn. Marilyn is a terrific person. Mark your name down, so you're here, she can put a tick mark next to your name, and we'll advise you. And please bring anybody else who would be willing to go. Having said all that, you can't do this. Anybody who wants...
Our requirements.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? Okay, I'm on.
Yes.
But I know her bylaws say that once in a lifetime...
Was that the bylaws at the time you invited to Titan?
What does that mean?
It means that...
She's grandfathered in.
She was grandfathered in if it came afterwards.
Oh, at the time that she bought?
Right.
In 1973?
Right.
I would have to find...
There were rentals in.
Sam, somewhere I came to...
That's right. And if you want to know if there's been any changes, go on the Palm Beach Clerk website. You can find your association's bylaws, and if there's been an amendment, you will see the amendment.
So she's grandfathered in from the date she purchased?
Yes.
There you go, I know...
There you go.
What's that? Oh, that's his...
That's per minute, right? It's not per hour.
Per minute. I want to thank everybody for coming, and, uh, tell your friends, we will have another meeting. Please stop by. Marilyn, let your name be known, and some good issues, including the parking, will be addressed.
I just wanted to make one statement.
Yes, go ahead.
With regard to the co-editor of the paper, there was a change a few months back which made, which made... Er, not loud enough. Which, which...
Hold on, hold on, important point.
They changed, they changed and put 63 in the paper together, calling it a communications area, and therefore, she is part of that communications area, including Islam.
Well, that's one of the...
That's where one comes into the other.
I also want to say something else. The blog is Mr. Israel's personal blog. Other villages, associations have a webpage that's access to everybody. Everybody be healthy.